I'm still, I'm trying to find out what the court reporter is on, so once I have verification that the court reporter is on, then we'll start. That's, that's the delay. If the court reporter is on, can you please send a message? Okay, yes, the court reporter is on. Thank you. All right. We're on the record. Good morning, everyone. As chairperson of the Alcohol Beverage Control Board for the District of Columbia in accordance with D.C. Official Code Section 25764 of the Open Meetings Act, I'm welcoming you to a regular scheduled meeting of the Alcohol Beverage Control Board. Today is November 5th, 2020. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to guidance made available by the District of Columbia's Office of Open Government regarding electronic meetings held by public bodies during the public health emergency. Pursuant to this guidance, notice of today's meeting was provided 48 hours in advance of the meeting on ABRA's website and on the district's central meeting calendar. The notice includes a time, date, agenda, and call-in or login information for public participation. This electronic meeting is being hosted by a WebEx account provided by the District of Columbia Government. Please address any questions or complaints to the OOG at opengov.gov.gov. My name is Donovan Anderson, and I'm chairman of the board. I would like to introduce the other members of the board who are also participating electronically pursuant to Mayor's Order 2020-054. Please respond when I announce your name. Mr. James Short.
Mr. James Short, present.
Ms. Rafi Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, present.
Ms. Jenny Hansen.
Jenny Hansen, present.
Mr. Edward Grandis.
Ed Grandis, present.
The board has five members in attendance for the conduct of business today, and that constitutes a quorum. Before we get underway with today's hearing calendar, I need to make a few instructions very clear so that the conduct of this hearings is understood by everyone. Today's hearings are being conducted through a WebEx account provided by the D.C. Office of Open Government. There are approximately, I think there are about 10 or so cases on the calendar today on our afternoon schedule. Once your case is called, I will take a moment for our IT specialists to elevate the rights for each party to enable their camera and microphone. Then and only then will you have the ability to engage your equipment. If your case has not been heard, you will remain mute and your camera will be disabled. At the conclusion of each case, the parties will have the option to leave. If the party chooses to stay, all cameras and microphones for the concluded case will be disabled. Should you have any questions or require technical assistance during the meeting during the hearing, please submit them using the question and answer feature or email simone dot andrews two at D C dot gov. Our first order of business today, today we'll be doing all protest hearing status. So our first order of business today is case number 19 P R O 00143. Assets, license number 113585. This hearing is canceled due to submission of a settlement agreement for the board's review and approval. The next case in our calendar is case number 19 P R O 00139 Kiss Tavern. License number 104710. I will now take a moment for our IT specialists to elevate the rights of each party of this case to enable their camera and microphone. Um, Andrews, can you please elevate the rights of Mr. Bianco, um, who is, is my understanding the attorney for, for the licensee? And also, I believe Anita Norman, A N C one B representative, please.
Both parties have been, their rights have been elevated.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Norman, can you please enable your camera, please? Just for able to do that. Ms. Norman.
Ability on this particular program on WebEx?
All right, well, if you're, if you're not able to identify, I mean, I can hear you, so we're, I'm fine with that, okay?
Okay.
Um, now, this is a, this is a show card here in status. Are there any preliminary, are there any preliminary issues that needs to be brought to the board's attend, attention?
A N C, A N C one B will be withdrawing the protest against Kiss Tavern.
Um, are you, you can, are, you can make a formal motion now to withdraw. You can, and we will withdraw it, so if that's what you want us to do, so we can, you can withdraw on the record, or do you want to do it in writing?
No, on the record is fine. I move to withdraw the protest against Kiss Tavern.
Do you have, do you have an objection to that, Mr. Bianco?
I do not, Mr. Chair, the licensing offense.
All right, well, thank you very much, Ms. Norman. Thank you, Mr. Bianco. So the, the protests have been withdrawn, have been withdrawn by the A N C, and the agency will move forward towards renewing the license. So the agency will move forward and, and follow the process for renewal of the license. I'm sorry, hold on one minute, please. So the, so the agency will move forward towards the, well, basically where we are now is that the licensing division will follow the process towards renewing the license. All right, so thank you very much, and have a great day. All right then.
Thank you.
The next case in our calendar is case number 19 P R O 00144 Safari Restaurant and Lounge. License number 90424. And, uh, Ms., Ms. Andrews, can you please elevate the, the rights of Mr. Temme, who is the licensee for Safari Lounge? And it's my understanding that it's, um, and I believe, yeah, the license, and, um, I'm trying to see who the protestors are. And they're abutting property.
All parties for this case have been elevated.
All right, all right, thanks. All right, um, let's, um, I see there are several folks, if you're able to enable your camera, please, can you please do so if you can?
Good morning. Can you, can you hear and see me?
I could, I was speaking, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. This is Roberto Montesinos from the law firm of Whiteford, Taylor &amp; Preston. I represent the, uh, abutting property owners in the matter.
Sir, have you made, have you made an appearance? Have you issued a, um, an appearance?
Yes, sir, I have. Uh, just this past Monday, I entered an appearance with Ms. Randall.
Okay, that's fine. All right, that's fine, sir. Um, I can see you. And, um, Mr. Temme, are you there?
Yes, I'm.
Uh, do you have a camera? You can, um, if you don't, if you do, can you turn your camera on? If you don't have a camera, then that's fine. I just wanted to ask you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure.
All right, well, I recognize your voice, so you can move forward. All right. Um, all right, that's fine. Um, all right, are there any, are there any preliminary matters that needs to be brought to the attention of the board? Uh, no, sorry, let me, let's, let's start off from the beginning. Let, um, I'm going to ask that, that you identify yourself as a record. We'll start with the licensee. Can you say and spell your name for the record, please?
Sure. Good morning, everyone. Fraz Temme Safari D C and Restaurant and Lounge. F R E Z is the first name, and the last name is E E A M E.
Thank you, Mr. Temme. Now, Mr. Montes.
Yes, sir.
Montes says, I'm sorry.
Montesinos, you were close, that's all right.
Montesinos here. So please state your name and spell it, and tell us what your role is, sir.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you very much for having me this morning. Once again, for the record, I am Roberto Montesinos. Roberto spelled R O B E R T O. Montesinos is spelled M O N T E S I N O S. I'm from the law firm of Whiteford, Taylor &amp; Preston, and I have been retained to represent the abutting property owners in this matter.
All right, all right. And so who is, but so who's your client, sir?
Uh, I have four clients.
No, you said there, but in property owners, that's why I'm just saying, who's your client? That's why I was asking.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know who the parties are, so when you said, when you said your client, I don't know who your client is, so that's why I was asking you.
Nope, no problem at all, I understand. Uh, so it would be the owners of the following properties. Um, the property address is 4308 Georgia Avenue, and the respective units within that property are units 102, units 202, unit 204, and unit 302. The owners of those respective properties are Matthew Sortia McMullin, Mina Karimi, Gabriela Kubini, and Claudia Rodriguez.
All right, all right. So how, so how many, so there are four, um, I'm, I'm sorry, how many folks again, how many people did you say there was? You see, I'm not told, I know that they're just, they're the abutting owners, but I don't know, I'm, how many about, about owners, so that's why I was asking.
Yes, there are four, understood, yes, there, there are four owners.
Okay, and I see there are some other folks on the line. Could, could you please identify yourself as a record and also spell your name, please?
Um, my name is Kim Varzi, V A R Z I, and I'm the A N C Commissioner for 4C07.
Okay. Now, are you, but is, is the A N C, the A N C did, is not protesting this license? Is, is the A N C?
The A N C did file a protest.
I don't have the, I, I, were you at the roll, did the A N C go to the roll call hearing?
Yes, I, and the preliminary mediation. I've been at every meeting that there's been thus far.
Okay, um, I can only go with information that's provided to me, and so all I, all that was provided to me is the abutting property owner, and I wasn't aware that the A N C, so I'm not, I am not objecting, I'm just trying to get clarification for my, for my own record, but I was told that, so if you see me look at my phone, it's because I've, I've been given information. If, if I, so it's not like I'm not paying attention to what's going on.
Yeah, no, that's fine, and I understand they had great weight, so it's fine, I'm here though.
Okay, so I'm sorry, your A N C, what A N C, I'm, I'm sorry again?
4C07.
Okay, all right, thank you. And who else is on, who else on the line?
Uh, this is Matthew Sortia McMullin, uh, Matthew, M A T T H E W. Last name is Sortia McMullin, S I O R D I A, second last name, M C M U L L E N. I'm one of the abutting property owners and have been, um, working with our legal counsel.
Okay, all right, fine, all right, thank you. Um, are, are there any preliminary matters that needs to be brought, that needs to be brought to the board's attention? By you, that's fine.
No, sir. Uh, again, for the record, this is, uh, Roberto Montesino speaking. There are no preliminary matters, to my knowledge, I'm not sure if the A N C or the licensee have anything they'd like to offer.
And are there preliminary matters far as the A N C is concerned, Ms. Varzi?
There are no preliminary, preliminary matters at this point, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, this matter, um, because this matter was, will be set for a protest hearing for a date to be determined, so we will have, if, if, if there's, if there's not a settlement agreement, we will have a protest hearing at some point in the, in the new year. Um, I just, some clarification for the record. Um, if the A N C, the A N C, of course, can sign a settlement agreement with, with, with the protestant, and, but if the, if the A N C was to sign a settlement agreement with the protestant, the abutting property owner would still have standing to move forward with the hearing. I just want that to, um, for all parties to be aware that, that, um, the A N C has its separate standing, and the abutting property owner does have its own sta, its, its separate standing, so there can be separate settlement agreements if one, if, if that's done, or, or one joint settlement agreement. One of the reasons why I always tell parties to try to do a settlement agreement, if, if possible, because no member of the board lives where this establishment is, and I'm, it's always been my position that if the community can settle their dispute, so at least everyone is happy, but if it comes to the board, someone will be happy and another party will not be happy. So if, if it can be worked out, then I would, um, strongly urge both parties to do that. If it cannot be worked out, then we will schedule this matter for protest hearing, and we will have a protest hearing, and the board will make a decision on, on whether or not the license will be renewed, or, and if it's renewed, or whether or not there are terms and conditions on, on doing more license. Okay, that, is everyone understood? Is it, I'm sure one? All right, fine. Okay, now that we're scheduled, now that we have scheduled this matter for protest hearing, there are a few things that I would like to instruct you about, so that the protest hearing is focused and addresses only those issues that are being protested. You either have already received, or will soon be receiving, an email from a more. You either have already received, or will soon be receiving, an email from a Mark, a money Morland that can date, contains a copy of a protest information form, PIP, and a copy of an exhibit form. Both parties are required to complete and submit the protest form, PIP, and the exhibit form at least seven days before the date of the hearing. If we do not receive a copy of your forms seven days before the hearing, your application or your protest may be subject to dismissal. These documents not only need to be submitted to ABRA, but to the opposing party as well. Please know that these documents greatly assist the board in narrowing the protest issues, facilitating the process, and keeping the parties on point during the hearing. Each side will have 90 minutes to present their case. This includes all direct and cross-examination of witnesses. The board does not intend to hear testimony in matters that are not relevant to these issues that are being protested, nor will the board tolerate repetitive testimony. If you have any questions, are there any questions? No questions?
And before, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I do have one question. Um, and I'll offer this as well. Again, for the record, this is Roberto Montesinos. Just over the course of the past couple of days, um, we have exchanged some emails uh, between, uh, there were some emails exchanged between my clients, myself, and the licensee regarding getting together a private mediation session. Uh, we haven't really decided whether we're going to go forward with that or not. Um, but the, in the event that we ultimately are able to negotiate a settlement agreement, whether that's between the abutting owners and the licensee individually, or with the A N C wrapped into that as well, um, I'm assuming we would just report that, that, uh, ultimate settlement to, to Ms. Randall, and, um, that, that would be the extent of, of what we need to do?
Right, right. Um, what, what the parties would do, if there's a settlement agreement, if you've been dealing with Ms. Randall, and I'm going to give you, I was going to give you her, um, she is our contact person, at least she's your contact person, April Randall, and so you can communicate with her, the parties, if there's a settlement agreement, the parties would provide, provide the agency a copy of the settlement agreement through her, and then the, um, if, if a protest hearing is scheduled, then, um, then the agency would, um, would not schedule the, the, the protest hearing. So that, so she's, she's your, your point of contact, and for both sides. Whatever questions or concerns that each side has, including the licensee, you can talk to Ms. Randall, she'll provide, she could, will provide assistance, um, if you don't understand, in a sense of how, what needs to be provided, what it needs to be provided, she can provide that information to you. Um, I just want to car, clarify for the record that the A N C was granted standing at that roll call. So, um, I know that when I started, I wasn't aware of it, but I just want to clarify the rec, for the record that the A N C is a party to this matter because they were granted standing at the roll call here. All right, so as I stated before, if you have any questions, please contact, um, April Randall at 202-442-4353. I don't have her email address in front of me right now, but I know that you, you, if you have been speaking to her through email, both sides are welcome to continue communicating with Ms. Randall to ensure that the process, so the, the, the agency will contact you and let you know, um, what date. If we, if we're actually going to a protest hearing, the agency will contact you and let you know when the protest hearing is scheduled for. If there are issues in a sense of, if the parties are not available for a date, um, you can jointly work with each other to come up with a date that's, that works, um, for everyone. But as I stated before, I prefer, if you have settlement agreements, because at least with settlement agreements, you can decide what happens in, in your community. And in that sense, everyone will be happy. I can promise you that if we, if, if it comes to a hearing, that both sides are going to be happy. And I prefer, when, when this, when we go through this process, both sides are happy because they have come up with, with an agreement. If that's what the, both sides want, that's workable, okay? So have a great day. Thank you for being here today. And I always say this, I hope I don't see you again, but if I have to see you again next year, the board, of course, will do what it has to do to make a decision that works for both sides, okay? Have a great day. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. All right. The next case in our calendar is case number 19 P R O 00145 Hook Hall. License number 109296. I would like the, um, Ms. Andrews, can you please elevate the rights of the licensee for Hook Hall and also, um, their counsel, Ms. Yohannes, please?
Actually, it's Andrew Klein, yes. But I cannot seem to find a camera icon to enable myself on video, so I will participate via audio, I apologize.
Are you going to deny us of the opportunity, Mr. Klein, of not seeing you?
That was not my death.
All right, all right. Um, we'll have the parties identify themselves. I think there's a.
One second, Mr. Chair, I'm still enabling some parties.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you, all right.
Oh, here we go.
Okay, Mr. Chair, all parties have been enabled.
Thank you. All right, um, I see that there are several folks online, so if you have the capability to, you are able to unmute yourself, and you're also able to turn your camera on if you have that capability. All right, so what I'll ask each party to do, I'll have, I'm going to ask each party to introduce themselves for the record and also spell their name for the record, and let's start with the licensee, please.
Uh, Andrew Klein, on behalf of the licensee, A N D R A W Klein, K L I N E.
All right, thank you, Mr. Klein. Um, is, is the licensee here with you, Mr. Klein?
Uh, the licensee is not here today, no.
Okay, fine, so let's, let's start with the, um, the protest, and let's start with the A N C.
Good morning, this is Michael Ray with A N C 1A, uh, Michael, M I C H A E L, Ray, W R A Y.
And we have the group of five on more, um, is Ms. Brimmer, is, is she available? She's, also, she's a representative. If not, we'll have the rest of folks identify themselves.
Uh, my name is Elizabeth Kim Oliver, E L I S A B E T H. My last name is Kim, K I M, space Oliver, O L I V E R.
Who else is on the line? I see a Keith, I see a name, Keith Hag, is that person on, is that person on, on the line?
Yeah, yes, hi, good morning, my name is Keith, K E I T H, last name, H A G G. Uh, I am a property owner on this Morton Street.
So are you, are you a member of the group of five, sir?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver, you're also a member of the group of five? All right, and it's my understanding that both the A N C and the group of five were, were granted standing at the roll call hearing, is that correct?
Yes.
Are there any preliminary matters that needs to be brought to the attention of the court?
No, sir.
The licensee does not have any, no.
All right, thank you. Um, I don't have, I don't have a, a specific date to provide for the protest hearing, but the protest hearing will be scheduled for, if, if we move forward to a protest hearing, if, in a sense that they are, there's not a settlement agreement, we will have a protest hearing in the new year. And I just want to inform the group of five or more And I just want to inform the group of five or more that if there is a settlement agreement reached, that's reached between the ANC and the licensee, the group of five or, the matter will be over, because the group of five or more will not have stand-in to move forward with the hearing if there is a settlement with an ANC. I also would just like to let the group of five or more know that the ABC cannot force the licensee and the ANC to have you participate in a group of, in a settlement agreement. Sometimes folks will say that I need to participate in a settlement agreement because I have stand-in, but by statute, the statute is clear that if there is a settlement agreement between the ANC and the licensee, then the group falls. But I just want to clarify that, I want to clarify, so I'm not trying to skirt this way to anyone, but just as a matter of fact, I just want to know where that is. It has always been my position that if the parties can settle this matter by a settlement agreement, the board welcomes that, because at least everyone will be happy, if the license is gonna be renewed, and so if there's a settlement agreement, then everyone will be happy. If we come to a hearing, then one side might be happy, and the other side might not be happy, and I prefer that when we go through these proceedings, that everyone leaves, leaving that they have been satisfied by whatever result that's reached. Okay? Alright. And now that we've scheduled this matter for protest hearing, there are a few things that I would like to instruct you about, so that the protest hearing is focused and addresses only those issues that are being protested. You either have already received or soon will be receiving an email from Imani Morland that contains a copy of our protest information form PIP and a copy of an exhibit form. Can everyone, can everyone please mute their mic, please? Both parties are required to complete and submit the protest information form PIP and the exhibit form at least seven days before the date of the hearing. If we do not receive a copy of your forms seven days before the hearing, your application or your protest may be subject to dismissal. These documents not only need to be submitted to ABRA but to the opposing party as well. Please know that these documents greatly assist the board in narrowing the protest issues, facilitating the process, and keeping the parties on point during the hearing. Each side will have ninety minutes to present their case. This includes all direct and cross-examination of witnesses. The board does not intend to hear testimony on matters that are not relevant to those issues that are being protested, nor will the board tolerate repetitive testimony. Are there any questions by anyone, please?
No, sir.
I hear none, okay. We thank you greatly for your cooperation. If you have any questions at any time leading up to the hearing, please do not hesitate to contact Ms. Randall at two oh two four four two four three five three. Thank you very much for your participation today, and I'll close by saying, I hope, I prefer, I hope not to see you again, and that is because, not because I don't wanna see you, if I don't see you, it tells me that both sides had a settlement agreement and they're very happy. If I see you, it tells me that you're not happy, but if we have to make the decision, of course, the board will make a decision on moving forward. So we will have, if we have a hearing, the hearing will be sometime in the new year, but the agency will contact the site to inform you the date and time of the protest hearing if we move forward. Thank you very much again for your attendance today, and have a great day, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. Alright, the next case on our calendar is case number nineteen PRO zero zero one four nine, Jimmy Valentine's Lonely Hearts Club, license number seven six three three zero. And I would ask, Ms. Andrews, can you please protect, I'm sorry, elevate the rights of the licensee, and there are several members of a group of five or more that needs to participate, that needs to participate in the hearing, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Mark Throp, your rights have been elevated, you can now enable your camera and your microphone. All the members of the group of five or more, no one else is on the line. If someone is on the line that belongs to this case, please use the chat feature to recognize yourself, so that you can be recognized. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Alright, I see there's a Elizabeth Kim Oliver, who's that?
She is from the previous case, I am making her an attendee now.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'll wait, I'll wait for another two to three minutes to see if, 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 if one of the protesting will.
There used to be five, I believe, sir.
I'm aware of that, sir, that's why.
Okay, thank you.
That's why I said I'm waiting, I'm waiting a couple of minutes. I'll probably give them another three minutes, it's eleven oh seven, so I'll probably wait another three minutes before, because I'm not quite sure. Okay, alright, alright. This matter, this matter was scheduled for this protest status hearing, and it's my understanding that it's, this matter was, yes, they were all told to, you're all told to be online at ten thirty for these hearings, because we went on the record at ten thirty. It is now eleven oh seven, and the licensee is not here, and there's been no member of the group of five or more, and the group of five or more was granted conditional standing at the roll call hearing. Seeing that there is no member of the group of five or more at this hearing today, I make a motion that the protests by the group of five or more be dismissed for their lack of participation. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett, seconds.
I'm sorry? I didn't hear.
Miss Crockett, seconds.
Okay, the motion has been seconded by Miss Crockett, I'll do a roll call vote, and the motion has been properly seconded by Miss Crockett. Mr. Short?
Mr. Short, I agree.
Ms. Hanson?
Ms. Hanson, I agree.
Mr. Grandis?
Ed Grandis, I agree.
And Ms. Crockett?
Rocky Crockett, I agree.
And Mr. Anderson, I agree.
The board votes five zero zero to dismiss the protesters in this particular case. What that means, Mr. Thorpe, the protesters will be provided, the board will issue a written order, given the twenty days to provide us cause, reasonable cause, why they were unable to participate in this matter today. If they, if they do not respond to the board in a sense of giving us reasonable cause, once the written notice is provided to them, the motion dismissing their protest, then what will occur is that their protest will be formally dismissed, and the licensing division will move towards processing the renewal of your license. Okay? Mr. Thorpe? Mr. Thorpe? Are you?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, did you hear what I said? Did you hear what I stated?
Uh, yes, sir.
Alright, okay, fine. So thank you very much for your participation today, and have a great day, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, the next case in our calendar, the next case in our calendar is case number nineteen PRO, nineteen PRO zero 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 one three one, Allure Lounge, license number, license, this is number one zero eight three oh three. And Ms. Andrews, can you please elevate the rights of the applicant, the licensee, and the ANC, please?
The parties for this case, their rights have been elevated.
Alright, thank you. So let's start, good morning, everyone. Let's start with the licensee, can the licensee please identify him or herself for the record, and please spell your name, please?
First name, Zerihun, is Z E R I H U N, last name, A M E N T E.
Alright, do you have a camera, sir, or you do not have a camera that you can turn on?
I do, where are you?
Oh, well, if you don't, that's fine, I was just asking.
I, I do have one, but I.
That's fine, that's fine. Let's have the ANC identify themselves for the record, and spell your name, please.
Good morning, this is Joel Kelty, representing ANC six C, my name is filled, J O E L, last name, K E L T Y.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Kelty, and we can now see you, Mr. Imani, good morning, alright, alright, thank you. Are there any preliminary matters that the board needs to address?
Yes, sir, the ANC requests that this application be dismissed because the applicant failed to appear at mediation.
Wait a minute.
Alright. Um. So you're, why? They. Mr. Imani, do you have any, do you have any, do you have any, do you have anything you wanna say?
Yes, I did, what was, what did he say?
He said that you failed to appear at mediation.
No, I was there.
No, sir, you were not there.
Alright.
When was it?
Alright. I'm just.
We met, me and you, we met, and me and Colin, I met before too.
I met you, sir.
Yeah, we did. And before, before, it was, it was somewhere in February.
The board, my recommendation, my recommendation to the board is that we're not gonna dismiss, we're not gonna, we are not gonna dismiss the application based on failure to, the alleged failure as stated by Mr. Kelty. When I said alleged failure, I don't know, so, so when I said alleged, so I don't, I'm not, I'm not saying I agree or disagree with you, Mr. Kelty, that, 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 that they did, they did or did not participate, and Mr. Imani, there's some disagreement, but that's not reason for, reason for the board to dismiss a protest, so therefore, I'm making a motion to the board for us not to dismiss the protest on that reason, is there a second?
Can I ask a question?
You don't necessarily, what's the question that you need to ask?
I second the motion.
Mr. Grandis has seconded the motion. Yes, sir, do you have a question you wanna ask, sir?
Yeah, I just wanted him to know that, can he email me or something that I missed?
Alright, well, there may be some confusion here, and I'm not sure on whose part it is. We had a mediation recently about a substantial change. I thought this hearing was about the substantial change.
Alright, alright, but, alright, alright. There are the motions that were seconded by Mr. Grandis, and let me do, let me have a roll call vote in motion for us, Mr. Short?
Mr. Short, I agree.
Mr. Grandis?
Ed Grandis agrees.
Ms. Hanson?
Ms. Hanson, I agree.
Ms. Crockett?
Rocky Crockett, I agree.
And Mr. Anderson, I agree, the matter passes five zero zero, so the board will not dismiss the application based on their allegation of the non-participation of the, the, in the mediation. Alright, are there any other issues, are there any other preliminary issues that needs to be brought to the attention of the board? Mr. Kelty, you have any other issues, and Mr. Imani, do you have any other issues?
I need to get some.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Is this a renewal or substantial change application that we're talking about today?
Application to renew the license.
Okay, because we also have a substantial change matter, do we not? Could we combine those two?
No, sir, this protest that we're addressing today, it's a protest to, on the, that was filed to renew the license. I don't have that in front of me, I don't know what that, the substantial change, I don't know when that was filed, that's not in front of the board for this hearing, and I don't know whether or not a protest was filed on that matter, that is something, if a protest was filed on that matter, we can find out from, from the agency whether or not both protests can be combined, but at this juncture, the only protest that I'm aware of, that's, that's, that's in front of us today, it's the renewal application. It's a renewal application. Now, if, 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 if you're asking, if you're, if you're asking us to combine both, this is something that the agency, we would be in favor of doing that for, to, to combine both the substantial change and the renewal application of the same. Mr. Imani, do you, are you, do you, do you know what we're talking about, sir?
Yes, I do, yeah.
So you filed, so there is, you filed for a substantial change, and you also filed to renew your license, is that correct, sir?
Yes.
And what Mr. Kelty is saying is that rather than have two separate protests, would you agree that we can combine both cases so they can, they can be addressed at the same time?
Yeah, that's fine.
Alright, so, so fine, so, so both parties have agreed to consolidate both matters. I do not have the protest number for the, for the substantial change, but the agency will combine both matters in one, and so therefore we'll have one, if we do have a protest hearing, we will have one protest hearing to address both the renewal and both the substantial change, and I think it, it makes, it's more efficient that all issues can be addressed at one time. Okay, and by agreement of the parties, that's what's been done. Alright, thank you. We don't have, I don't have a specific date to provide to you at this juncture when the protest hearing will be held, but the protest hearing will be held, if there is a hearing, the hearing will be held at a date in the new year. I, what I would suggest to both parties, if, if the parties can communicate, and if, if, if they can, if the matter can be settled through a settlement agreement, I'm not saying that's what you should be, you should do, I'm just saying that if this is what the parties want to do, the board will support that, because at least I know that both sides will be happy, because both sides have to live with the existence or nonexistence of this business, whether, irrespective of what the board does, so if both, if this, if both sides are amenable to settle this case, they can, if the board, if both sides are not amenable to do that, then the board will make a decision, okay? Alright, now that we've scheduled this matter for protest hearing, there are a few things that I would like to instruct you about, so that the protest hearing is focused and addresses only those issues that are being protested. You either have already received or will soon be receiving an email from Imani Morland that contains a copy of a protest information form and a copy of an exhibit form. Both parties are required to complete and submit the protest information form PIP and the exhibit form at least seven days before the date of the hearing. If we do not receive a copy of your forms seven days before the hearing, your application or your protest may be subject to dismissal. These documents not only need to be submitted to ABRA but to the opposing party as well. Please know that these documents greatly assist the board in narrowing the. Please know that these documents greatly assist the board in narrowing the protest issues. Facilitating the process and keeping the parties on point during the hearing. Each side will have ninety minutes to present their case. This includes all direct and cross-examination of witnesses. The board does not intend to hear testimony on matters that are not relevant to these issues that are being protested. Nor will the board tolerate repetitive testimony. Any questions, anyone? Alright, we thank you greatly for your cooperation. If you have any questions at any time leading up to the hearing, please do not hesitate to con- contact. The Assistant General Counsel, Ms. April Randall, at two oh two four four two four three five three. Thank you very much for your attendance and participation today. And as I, as I always say in these cases, I, I support. Settlement agreements if you're unable to see, if, if, if I don't see you again, I won't take it personally. But if I see you the new year for a hearing, the board will make a decision, um, regarding. The renewal and the substantial change. Thank you for your participation today and have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Thanks. Alright. The next case in our calendar is case number nineteen. P R O zero zero one four zero, the fireplace, license number one four four one nine. This hearing is continued to January thirteenth, two thousand. Twenty twenty one at ten thirty A M. See board order number. Twenty twenty dash six five four. This concludes our morning session. Um, so we are in recess until our one thirty hearing. Um, so I'll ask the board now to move into executive session. So we are adjourned until one thirty. Thank you very much. Bye bye.
Mr. Martin, please identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, good afternoon, we're back on the record. Our next cases, our protest status cases are number 20 pro zero 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 five uproar, license number nine two one, I'm sorry, nine two zero one two. Ms. Andrews, can you please elevate the rights of Ms. Norman, agency commissioner, and also the licensee for uproar, please?
That's all, Mr.
Um, no, I've... Are these the participants for uproar?
No, we're the participants for felicity.
That's...
My apologies, my apologies.
Turn to the next hearing, yes, okay. So it's Ms. Norman, and, um, and I believe, and I believe maybe Tom Martin, I believe, yes, Mr. Martin is on, and yes, Ms. Norman is on, yes.
Good afternoon, this is Mr. Martin.
Yes, hold on a minute, Mr. Martin, and Ms. Norman, can you...
That's all, Mr.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Norman, can you please, um, open your microphone and camera, please? Good afternoon, everyone. Before we move forward, I just want to announce that Board Member Grandis will recuse himself from participation in this case. All right, um, Mr. Martin, if you're able to turn the camera on, if you have the possibility, please do that, and then we'll have, we'll start the identification process. I would ask that the licensee, the licensee and its, the licensee's representative, please identify yourself for the record and also spell your name.
Good afternoon, my name is Thomas Martin, T H O M A S M A R T I N, on behalf of Enching LLC.
So let me ask you a question, Mr. Martin, because I'm not familiar with you. What is your role with uproar?
I'm their attorney at this matter.
Okay, I was, I'm not familiar with you there, so I wasn't aware that you were, so that's why I was just asking for clarification. All right, thank you for that. And, um, all right, Ms. Norman, can you identify yourself for the record, please? Ms. Norman, please identify yourself for the record and spell your name, please.
Good.
This is the second time for the day, by now we should get it together. Go ahead. You're, please unmute your phone.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, I am Commissioner Anita Norman from 1B01.
All right, thank you, Ms. Norman. There currently, and the board on its own initiative, will, I'm asking, this, the purpose of this protest here, it's a substantial change application to increase the occupancy load from seventy-four to twenty-one.
Biden was winning two to one.
Mr. Short, could you please turn off your TV and mute your mic? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Good afternoon. We're back on the record. Our next cases. Our protest status cases are. Number twenty P R O zero 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 five uproar license number nine two one. I'm sorry, nine two zero one two. Ms. Andrews, can you please? Elevate the rights of Ms. Norman, A N C Commissioner, and also the licensee for uproar, please.
That's all, Mr.
Um. No, I've. Are these a, are these a participant for uproar?
No, we're the participants for Felicity.
That's, that's.
My apologies, my apologies.
Turn to the next hearing, yes, okay. So it's Ms. Norman. And. And I believe. And I believe maybe Tom Martin, I believe, yes, Mr. Martin is on, and yes, Ms. Norman is on, yes.
Good afternoon. This is Mr. Martin.
Yes, hold on a minute, Mr. Martin. And Ms. Norman, can you?
That's all, Mr.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Norman, can you please? Open your microphone and camera, please. Good afternoon, everyone. Before we move forward, I just want to announce that Board Member Grandis will recuse himself from participation in this case. All right. Mr. Mr. Martin, if you're able to turn the camera on, if you have the possibility, please do that. And then we'll have, we'll start the identification process. I would ask that the licensee, the licensee and its, the licensee's representative, please identify yourself for the record and also spell your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Thomas Martin, T H O M A S M A R T I N. On behalf of. And Ching LLC.
So let me ask you a question, Mr. Martin, because I'm not familiar with you. What is your role with uproar?
I'm their attorney at this matter.
Okay, I was, I'm not familiar with you there, so I wasn't aware that you were, so that's why I was just asking for clarification. All right. Thank you for that. And. All right, Ms. Norman, can you identify yourself for the, for the record, please? Ms. Norman, please identify yourself for the record and spell your name, please. This is the second time for the day. By now, we should get it together. Go ahead. You're, please unmute your phone.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, I am Commissioner Anita Norman from one B zero one.
All right, thank you, Ms. Norman. There, there currently, and the board on its own initiative, well, I'm, I'm asking. This, the purpose of this protest here, it's a substantial change application to increase the occupancy load from seventy four to two hundred. It's my understanding that. Uproar also has a renewal. It's renewal for, which is case number nineteen P R O zero 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 one three eight. That is also up for protests and the board is requesting, and this is just a request, the parties can agree or disagree. Would the parties jointly agree to consolidate both of these cases? Mr. Martin. The.
We, you would agree, would agree to consolidate the cases.
Ms. Norman?
You have no objection.
All right, thank you. So what, so what, the request is made by the board and both parties have mutually, and this, and I just want to clarify, it was a request, it wasn't a demand, demand. It was the board requested whether or not the parties wanted to consolidate both cases. And both parties have agreed to consolidate case number twenty P R O zero 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 five and nineteen P R O zero 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 one three eight. So both of those protests here in cases are consolidated. Thank you very much for that agreement. Are there any preliminary matters in these cases that either party wishes to bring to the board's attention?
From C.
None, Miss.
No, 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 from, from the A N C, we'd like to bring two, two things to the board's attention.
Yes.
One, that there was a B Z A board order for C B, a community benefit agreement that was refused by uproar, and also we never received any paperwork showing that any repairs were made to the property via D C R A recommendation.
Well, what, I know those are, what I've asked for Ms. Norman, just preliminary issues, so these are. If, if these are orders that were ordered by a different D C government agency, if this case goes to a protest hearing, then these are more arguments that can be brought as substantive issues at the, at the protest here. And so I appreciate what you have stated, but, but if these are issues, you can bring the orders, if we go to a hearing, you can bring the order, and that will be part of your protest hearing, okay? So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. I, the board, we don't have a specific, we don't have a, normally at these protests here in status, I would inform both parties when, what the date and time of the next protest hearing is, but because of the current situations, the board does not have a specific date and time at this moment to schedule the hearing, however, the hearing will be scheduled for some point within the new year. I though would ask both parties to, if they're able to meet and negotiate a settlement, if this is what the board, both parties want to do. I always support that. I'm not telling the party that this is what they need to do. But I always support that because my view has always been, if the parties can work it out, at the end of the day, they have to live with, with each other. If you come to a hearing, then one side is going to be happy, the other side might be unhappy, and I prefer when we do these proceedings that both sides are happy, that in the sense that they have started this process, and they both receive satisfaction from, from the process. With that said. All right, so, so now that we have scheduled this matter for protest hearing, there are a few things that I would like to instruct you about so that the protest hearing is focused and addresses only those issues that are being protested. You either have already received or will soon be receiving an email from Imani Morland that contains a copy of a protest information form tip and a copy of an exhibit form. Both parties are required to complete and submit the protest information form and the exhibit form at least seven days before the date of the hearing. If we do not receive a copy of your forms, seven days before the hearing, your application or your protest may be subject to dismissal. These documents not only need to be submitted to ABRA, but to the opposing party as well. Please know that these documents greatly assist the board in narrowing the protest issues, facilitating the process, and keeping the parties on point during the hearing. Each side will have ninety minutes to present their case. This includes all direct and cross-examination of witnesses. The board does not intend to hear testimony on matters that are not relevant to these issues that are being protested, nor will the board tolerate repetitive testimony. Are there any questions by either side? None? All right, we thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martin. And thank you, Ms. Norman. We thank you greatly for your cooperation. If you, if you have any questions at any time leading up to the hearing, please do not hesitate to contact Assistant General Counsel. April Randall at two oh two four four two four three five three. Thank you. And again, thank both parties for making themselves available this afternoon. And the board always encourages folks to try to work the matter out. However, if you are unable to do so, the board will see you at a protest hearing in the new year. And again, just remind both parties that the renewal and the substantial change protest hearings are consolidated in one case, okay? All right, thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, the next case in our calendar is case number nineteen P R O zero 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 six. Felicity Lounge, license number one one two five oh two. And Ms. Andrews, can you please elevate the rights of the the protesters and the licensee in Felicity Lounge, please?
Sure, stand by.
Thank you.
All parties' rights have been elevated.
Right, thank you. All right, good afternoon, everyone. I would like everyone to introduce themselves for the record and also spell your name, and let's start with the licensee or its representative. Licensee, who's the licensee?
Ms. Gary, can you hear me?
No, I couldn't hear you, sir, so.
How about that? Good afternoon.
I can hear you now. Do you have, do you have a microphone? I'm sorry, do you have a camera?
Yes, I do have a cam. I don't know why it's not working.
All right, all right, well, I can hear you, so go ahead, please.
Yes.
Please identify and spell your name, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeffrey Miskary, J E F F E A R Y, last name Miskary, M I S K I R I.
And what is your relationship to Felicity Lounge, sir?
I'm one of the partners in the business, sir.
All right, thank you. Let's, so we'll go to the, the protesting, starting with the A N C.
Good afternoon. This is Joel Kelty, J O E L K E L T Y, representing A N C six C.
All right, we have a group of seven, and is there, is, who's the representative, is there a representative on, on board? All right, we'll start, we'll start with a group of several. Let's, we can introduce, introduce yourself on the record, please, and spell your name.
So we actually are a group of twenty five.
Okay.
So my name is Angel, A N G E L L E, Smith, S M I T H.
Okay.
B A U T H.
Okay, thank you. What else do we have?
Jordan Law, J O R D A M, B A U G H.
And who else do we have? What else do we have on, on the line regarding your group? Are you the only two from your group on, 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 on the call?
Correct.
All right, it's my understanding, but the group, it's my. It is my understanding that at the, at the roll call of hearing, the group, the group, the group was provided conditional standing. Now.
Sir, I believe we were provided actual standing, not conditional standing. We had a large contingency of signers present at the hearing.
So how many people were present at the hearing?
More than ten.
Mr. Mr. Miskary.
Yes, sir.
Were, um. Was the group, from your perspective, I can only go with information that I have here, and I can, I will clarify that in a minute, but from your perspective, sir, was the group of, of, and I'll clarify this from, from, from the agency, but was. I'm sorry, hold on, hold on. They're definitely. Let me, let me, let me back up. I apologize. I'm looking at the wrong case. It's my apologies, you know, you know, part of the problem when we do, when we do this remotely, I am somewhere else, so let me, I will apologize to you, Mr. Mr. Ball. The group of, it's, it's, it's a group of ten, a group of ten and group of twenty four. So if, if, if a group of ten and a group of twenty four, is that the same group or is it two different groups?
My recollection at the last hearing was that we merged them, but I'll defer to the record.
Okay, then, that's, that's fine, that's fine. It's my apologies, standing was, standing was granted to, to, to the group and also to the A N C, so that was my, my apologies. All right, are there any preliminary matters in, in this case? By the group, by Mr. Miskary and by Mr. Kelty, any preliminary matters?
No, nothing on behalf of the business.
Okay, thanks. All right, normally at, normally at the protest hearing, these protests here in status, we would have issued the date and time for the protest hearing, but we're not doing that at this juncture, so the agency will contact the parties and provide them a date and time for the protest hearing. Now we'll have the protest hearing at some point during the new year, okay? All right, thanks. All right, now that we've scheduled this matter for protest hearing, there are a few things that I would like to instruct you about so that the protest hearing is focused and addresses only those issues that are being protested. You either have already received or will soon be receiving an email from Imani Morland that contains a copy of a protest information form and a copy of an exhibit form. Both parties are required to complete and submit the protest information form and the exhibit form at least seven days before the date of the hearing. If we do not receive a copy of your forms seven days before the hearing, your application or your protest may be subject to dismissal. These documents not only need to be submitted to ABRA, but to the opposing party as well. Please know that these documents greatly assist the board in narrowing the protest issues, facilitating the process, and keeping the parties on point during the hearing. Each side will have ninety minutes to present their case. This includes all direct and cross-examination of witnesses. The board does not intend to hear testimony on matters that are not relevant to these, to those issues that are being protested, nor will the board tolerate repetitive testimony. Are there any questions?
No.
All right, one thing that I also, and I, I'm doing this routinely, this is not, please do not take this negatively, but I do this routinely just to invite to let parties know that this renewal, the substantial change in the renewal, it appears is being protested by a group and also by the A N C. I just want to let the group know that by statute, if the A N C signs a settlement agreement with the licensee, then you're standing, the case is over because, and so you're, you're, you cannot move forward with a protest if, if, if a settlement agreement is signed with the A N C. You can join on to, if there's a settlement agreement, you can join on to the settlement agreement with the A N C. However, the board cannot force the A N C and the, and the licensee to include you in their settlement if they don't want to. I just, we have had several situations where groups, when their settlement agreement signed between the licensee and the A N C, and motions are being, are being made to the board by the groups to say that we want more forward with the hearing because we are granting standing, so I just want to, to inform the, the group that by statute, if a settlement agreement is signed between the licensee and the A N C, that there is really nothing that the board can do to continue the case. So just, that's, it's just, doesn't, doesn't F Y I, it's nothing, this is not me telling, telling them to exclude you, it's just saying as an F Y I, for you to be aware of what the law says, okay? All right.
Understood.
All right, we thank you greatly for your cooperation. If you have any questions at any time leading up to the hearing, please do not hesitate to contact Assistant General Counsel, April Randall, at two oh two four four three four three five three. And the last thing I want to say, I always, as just the general course, I always say to the parties, if you're able to work this out through a settlement agreement, the board appreciates that. And I appreciate that in the sense that this is your community, if the establishment is going to exist. If you have, if you have a settlement agreement, then both sides will agree how this establishment will exist in your community. If it comes to the board, none of us live in the community, so we'll make decisions that one side might be happy, the other side would not be happy. So I always say routinely, if I don't see you again, I do not take it personally. However, if I see you in the new year, the board will make the decision, and I wish you good luck. And let's see where we are, whether or not we have this protest hearing. And thank you very much for your participation today and have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Bye bye. All right, the next case in our calendar is case number nineteen P R O zero zero one four eight. Formerly slip, I'm sorry, SIP, from now the eight, eight twelve lounge, license number nine five one six four. And Ms. Andrews, can you please elevate the rights of the, excuse me, of the A N C along with the licensee for the establishment?
That's all, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. All right. Um. Mr. G D, do you have the ability, do you have, do you have a, a, a video? You can open your video? Are you able to do that? Um. If not, it's fine. I'm just saying, if, if you do, you can. Yes, thank you, sir, I can see you.
Can you see me now?
Yes, we can see you now. All right, so good afternoon, everyone. I will ask, I will ask everyone to introduce themselves for the record. Also, please say and spell your name, starting with C licensee.
My name is Temi Temitopeijiti.
All right, thank you, sir. The A N C?
Commissioner. Vice President, Vice Chair and Treasurer, A N C five C, Jeremiah Montague Junior. First name Jeremiah, J E R E M I A H, last name Montague, M O N T A G U E Junior.
All right, thank you, Mr. Montague. Thank you, Mr. G D. This is an application to renew the license of the establishment. Are there any preliminary matters that that needs to be brought to the board's attention by either side?
There was a question.
Yes, Mr. Mont.
By a potential witness, if this goes, if this moves forward as I expected, Phil. We call, we can call witnesses at that time, right?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any questions, Mr. G D?
No.
All right, all right. Normally, normally, we would set, you would be given a date and time for the protest hearing, however, where I'm not able to give you a date and time at this juncture, however, the agency will provide both parties with a date and time of the protest hearing, okay? All right. And now that we have scheduled this matter for a protest hearing, there are a few things that I would like to instruct you about so that the protest hearing is focused and addresses only those issues that have been protested. You either have already received or will soon be receiving an email from Imani Morland that contains a copy of a protest information form and a copy of an exhibit form. Both parties are required to complete and submit the protest information form and the exhibit form at least seven days before the date of the hearing. If we do not receive a copy of your form seven days before the hearing, your application or your protest may be subject to dismissal. These documents not only need to be submitted to ABRA, but to the opposing party as well. Please know that these documents greatly assist the board in narrowing the protest issues, facilitating the process and keeping the parties on point during the hearing. Each side will have ninety minutes to present their case. This includes all direct and cross-examination of witnesses. The board does not intend to hear testimony on matters that are not relevant to the issues that are being protested, nor will the board tolerate repetitive testimony. Are there any questions?
No.
We thank you for your cooperation. If at any point you have any questions at any time leading up to the hearing, please do not hesitate to contact Assistant General Counsel April Randall at two oh two four four two four three five three. I know you had asked a question earlier, Mr. Monte, Montague regarding witnesses. Whatever questions you have, you can address them, um, to Ms. Randall, Mr. Giddy, that you also have the right. If you have any questions and are concerned, please contact Ms. Randall about the process. So if, if, if either side have any questions about the process, what documents, how is, how to submit documents to the agency, um, you are free, both sides are free to reach out to Ms. Randall and she'll provide you the guidance. That's, that's required. Okay?
Okay.
Um, I always say to all parties, if you're able to settle this matter through a settlement agreement, the board appreciates that. I'm not telling you that you need, this is what you need, you need to do. Um, this is, this is just a suggestion on my part. If the parties aren't able to settle this matter, I will see you in the new year for a protest hearing. So have a great day and thank you for your participation today.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. The next case in our calendar is case number nineteen P R O zero zero one six three. Chroma, ultra bar chroma, license number seven four seven six seven. And I would ask, Ms. Andrews, can you please elevate the rights of the licensee? I think it's Ms., either Mr. Klein or Ms. Johannes and the ANC and the group of seven, please.
Standby. We have a long list for this.
Thank you.
All, Mr. Chair, if there are any, anyone else in the hearing that is supposed to be, uh, speaking on behalf of this case, could you please send a message via chat?
I'll wait one other minute to see if there is anyone else that's outstanding.
It doesn't look like Michael Shackell, who's one of our teammates, has been elevated.
Okay, I'll elevate his rights now.
Yeah, he said he's blocked. Oh, there he is. Great.
Could the parties please mute themselves unless they are speaking?
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, this is, this is a protest here in status. It's my understanding that this case has been protested by, um, ANC two C and a group of, group of five or more, a group of seven or more. All right. So I would ask each party to rep, to identify them for the rec, for the record. I will start with C licensee and its representative.
Good afternoon. Uh, Sidon Johannes here on behalf of the licensee.
I apologize, Johannes, can you please spell your, um, you along with everyone else? I want, need everyone to also spell their name for the record also, please.
Sure. It's S I D O N Y O H A N N E S.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Johannes. Let, let's start with, um, do we have the representative for, for the group? We can start with, with, we can start there first and then we'll see our party's identity.
Ashley Steinberg. Sorry, I missed what you asked for. Are you asking for the protesters?
Yes. So I now need, I need you to identify yourself on the record and also spell your names on the record, please.
Sure. Hi, I'm Ashley Steinberg. It's A S H L E Y S T E I N B E E R G.
All right. So I'll have the other represent, I'll have the other members of the group identify themselves.
I can go next and then I can pass off to the next person so that it's not a million people speaking at the same time. So I'm Yaniv Suissa, Y A N E V S U I S S A. And then why don't I pass it to Michael to go next?
Hi, this is Michael Shackell, M I C H A E L Shackell S C H A K O W. And I will pass it on to, um, Christopher.
Thank you, Michael. Um, my name is Christopher Ford. It's C H R I S T O P H E R. Last name Ford, F O R D. And, uh, I also have with me, uh, Del Galloway.
Hello, um, this is a two for, um, the name is Del, D E L, last name Galloway, G A L L O W A Y. Thank you. And turn it to Brett?
Yes, this is Brett Spooner. That is B R E T T S P O O N E R. And I will pass it to Michael Schenkel.
Hi, Chairman. Uh, my name is Michael Schenkel. I am the ANC Commissioner for two C zero one. And we'll go to Kevin.
And is, do we have, have we identified everyone?
Um, I'm also with the ANC, Kevin Willsey, K E V I N W I L S E Y, I'm the chairman of ANC two C.
Okay. All right. Is that everyone? Has everyone identified themselves? Are we missing anyone? All right. Who did not, who was not at the, as from the group, who was not at the roll call hearing? Who was not at the roll call hearing at, from the group? I need you to state your name for the record.
Yaniv Suissa was not at the roll call hearing.
Who else was not at the roll call hearing? Who else was not at the roll call hearing?
Brett Spooner was not at the roll call hearing.
And so you have identified Mr. Brett Spooner, you said that you were not at the roll call hearing?
That's correct.
Ms. Johannes was Mr. Spooner and Mr. Sax, um, give me, Mr. Jens, yeah, I'm sorry. Swissa, Swissa. I hope I don't do too wrong. Were they at the roll call hearing?
No, they were not.
All right. So it's my understanding that the group was granted conditional standing at the roll call hearing, provided that, provided that two other members show up at this hearing. And so it's my understanding that Mr. Spooner and Mr. Swissa were not at the roll call hearing. But therefore I make a motion that, or can you please mute your microphone if you're not speaking, please? I then make a motion that the, the board, um, provides full standing to the protestant. Is there a second?
Ms. Crockett seconds.
Crockett has seconded a motion. I will now take a roll call vote and a motion that has been properly seconded by Ms. Crockett. Mr. Grandis. We're having a roll call vote, Mr. Grandis. Turn your microphone on, Mr. Grandis. I'm sorry?
Yes.
Mr. Grandis has, has voted yes. Mr. Short?
Mr. Short, yes.
Ms. Hanson?
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Ms. Crockett?
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
And Mr. Anderson, I agree. The vote is five to, five, five to nothing. So therefore, standing has been granted to the group of seven to participate at protest hearing. Are there?
I'm so sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to clarify something. This is Ashley Steinberg. Also, Chris, pardon me?
Go ahead. I'm listening to you.
Okay, I'm really sorry for interrupting. It's just that Chris Ford also was not at the hearing. I don't know whether that matters to you, but I just wanted to flag it. But he's here now.
All right. Well, it, 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 it's not relevant. All, all I need was, was two members.
I know. I just wanted to, just be careful here. Thank you.
As, as long as two additional persons who were not at the status hearing, as long as they are here today, we're fine.
Perfect. Thank you.
So you're telling me that Mr., you know, now, Mr. Ford, I clearly asked, were you at the, what I, this, what did I say? I said, if you are not at the status hearing, please let me know. And so, Mr. Ford, why didn't you not say something?
My apologies, Commissioner, but, um, we also have the two other folks that stood up. So, uh, you mentioned in the beginning that Jill, we needed two, so that's why I didn't come forward.
Well, what, what I'm trying to do, Mr. Ford, you know, you, you took the day out of your very, very busy schedule because you had nothing better to do to show up at this protest here in status. So I want to make sure that you, you believe that your time is valuable, that so, that's why I'm recognizing you because now, because of COVID, we're home, we're not doing, we're very busy. So I, I hope you know that this has been done in jest, but, but thank you, Ms. Steinberg, for bringing that, the attention. So the board has voted to grant full standing to, to the, um, to the group. And so, so, um, the protestant has standing and all, I'm sorry, the ANC has standing, also the group has standing. One thing that I just want to point out, just statutory to the group, if, if for some, if, if the licensee decides to sign a settlement agreement with the ANC, then the protest ends because the group cannot continue with the protest if there is a, is, if there is, uh, a settlement agreement with the ANC. That's just statutory. And I also want to un, inform the group that the board cannot force the ANC to, to make your party to a settlement agreement if they elect not to make your party to a settlement agreement. And I'm saying this because we have had, we have had occasions where groups have appealed to the board to say that we have standing and we want to continue with the hearing or, um, you need to force them to make us a part of a settlement agreement. And I just want to advise the group that stat, by statute, the board cannot do that. So not, not, I'm not saying the ANC should leave them out. I'm just providing information to say that by statute, the board is unable to do that. Okay? Are there any other, are there any preliminary issues that needs to be brought to the board's attention?
I just want to clarify quickly. I know that the group has been granted, granted standing. Um, and I, I, just for the record, want to state that it's a group of six, not a group of seven, because I believe there is one member who has fallen off or has not appeared for either the roll call or the status hearing. And that's David Voiles, I believe I'm correct. Voiles?
Yes, he's no longer a resident in the building.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, for, for my purpose, it's, um, for my purpose, standing is, standing has been granted and so they can decide once, once they've met the, the, the threshold for standing, then they can decide who, who else wants to be a part of their, their group. And since Ms. Steinberg has been, she is the designated representative of the group. So as long as she's here and standing has been granted, then that's fine. So are there any other preliminary, preliminary issues? None?
Nothing from that.
All right. Um, normally at, normally at these protest hearing, status hearing, I would provide a date and time for a, for the protest hearing. However, I am unable to provide that date at this juncture. The agency will contact you shortly and provide some dates in the new year when we will have the protest hearing. Um, what I will say to the groups, if you're able to, to have a settlement, if you're able to, to meet and discuss and sign an agreement, so be it. The board would be happy because my view has always been, if you do settlement agreements, then both, all sides will be happy with the, with, with whatever the end decision is. If the decision, the board is open and willing to make a decision, but maybe not everyone's going to be happy. So that's one of the reasons why. I just put it out there. If you can settle it, if, if the board will not frown on that, but if it has to come to a hearing, then we're fine. Okay? All right. Now, I'm sorry, yes, who's speaking?
Um, this is, uh, Commissioner Willsey.
Yes, Mr. Willsey.
Um, I do have a question about the, you know, moving along for a protest hearing. What considerations is your agency giving for, you know, setting these dates up? This is one of these cases where it's nearly impossible for us to come to any kind of agreement or even work on a protest without the establishment being open. Because one of the major concerns here is noise and we started working on it and we've basically come to an impact because of COVID. It's nobody's fault, but, um, there's no, and I talked to their attorney about this and so it's, it's sort of a sticky situation. And we're just sort of wondering, um, what kind of parameters you're putting in place for these hearings? Are, are we going to have a hearing after establishments are allowed to open them full and, you know?
Well, I, I, I think part of this, part of what's going on now, we're in phase two. And based on the numbers that are, we, based on the numbers that have been reported, I don't know when we're going to come out of phase two. And I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that the mayor does not take us, not the mayor, that the health department doesn't suggest to the mayor that we move back to phase one or phase zero. So I don't know. However, so I don't know where, I, I don't know where we're, we are going to do. As you, as you're aware, this is probably a hearing we should have had in the spring, but because of COVID, we're now trying to, we're now trying to come forward. And the board, the agency has not put a schedule as yet when it is that we're going to schedule these hearings. But, um, it, the parties, is, is this a, this is a, this is a renewal? Is it, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
The parties can jointly send a motion to, to the, to the, to the agency to postpone whatever date that's, that, that we suggest. So if we suggest a date to have the protest hearing and if both, but if both sides jointly agree that we want to wait until COVID and because we are so, and, and I'm saying this this way, that we are so certain that COVID is going to come to an end. And so therefore, we can have this protest hearing after COVID, after we have had whatever we need to have so we, so we can go back to what's considered regular life, then that is your option. So once we schedule the date, the parties can, can jointly agree, um, the, the, the parties can jointly ask the agency to, um, postpone the date to, to, to another date to be determined. So that is part of the discussion that both sides can have. And they, the board will work with you. And so because it's, because there is a renewal, you don't have that, that strict timeline to say that we have to have a protest hearing within a specific period of time because it is, the establishment is open.
So it's already been going on for a whole year or so.
Well, as I said before, we, this, this is in charted time. Um, I did not know that I would be doing a hearing here on Webex, but I'm, I'm now very comfortable because we've been out, we've, we've been doing these hearings and today is actually the first day that we have done protest here instead. So the ABC board has been, and we've been in opera- So the ABC board has been, and we've been in operation, so we've met every Wednesday since August. I'm sorry, since, since, since March. But yesterday, we had, um, show calls here in status for the first time, and today is our first day of having, um, protest here instead. So we're trying to figure out how to get back to, to normal, whatever that is. And so, but we will work with you. Um, we'll, we'll, the board and the agency will work with you to make sure that whatever decision is made, it's in the best interest of all parties, okay? Alright.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright. So now that we've scheduled this matter for protest hearings, there are a few things that I would like to, I've not read that before. Is that, is that correct? Did I read the instructions?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yes.
Now, yes, I did, I read the instructions.
You did.
I did? Did I read the instructions before? Okay. Alright, thank you. You know, I have my, my script that I'm trying to follow along, so, you know, I know, Mr. Wisely, you took me off my, you know, my routine that I'm trying to go. You just took me off my routine, so I'm trying to remember where I was. Alright. You know, we have to, in light of these times, we have to try our best to make the best of it, and that's what I'm trying to do, so, you know. Alright. Now that we've scheduled this matter for protest hearing, there are a few things that I would like to instruct you about so that the protest hearing is focused and addresses only those issues that have been protested. You either have already received or will soon be receiving an email from Imani, Imani Morland that contains a copy of a protest information form and a copy of an exhibit form. Both parties are required to complete and submit the protest information form PIP and the exhibit, exhibit form at least seven days before the date of the hearing. If we do not receive a copy of your forms seven days before the hearing, your application or your protest may be subject to dismissal. These documents not only need to be submitted to ABRA, but to the opposing party as well. Please know that these documents greatly assist the board in narrowing the protest issues, facilitating the process, and keeping the parties on point during the hearing. Each side will have ninety minutes to present their case. This includes all direct and cross-examination of witnesses. The board does not intend to hear testimony on matters that are not relevant to these issues that are being protested, nor will the board tolerate repetitive testimony. Are there any questions? Alright, hearing done. We thank you greatly for your cooperation. If you have any questions at any time leading up to the hearing, please do not hesitate to contact Assistant General Counsel April Randall at 202-442-4353. Hold on one minute, please. Yep, and so, um, and I, I, yeah. If I look at my phone, it's because, it's not because I'm getting personal call, phone calls, maybe I'm forgetting something. And so therefore, folks are reminding me that, so I just want people to know that if I pick up my phone, it's not because I have something more important to do than, than to have, have your attention. Um, so, as I said, I was just reminded that if you're in no rush to move forward with a protest hearing, the board is in no rush. So at any point, you can, um, once we have provided some dates, if all sides agree to postpone it, the board will grantly postpone the, um, the date to a date that's mutually agreeable to everyone, okay? So, thank you for your participation today.
Thank you very much.
And have a great year, and I hope not to see you in the new year. Yeah. And that means that you have agreed to a settlement agreement and everyone is happy. Okay, so have a great day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Johannes, I'm going to leave your rights elevated because you are a part of the next case, okay?
Alright. The next case in our calendar is case number nineteen P R O zero zero one six zero. That's vivid, excuse my license number one zero five nine two two. This hearing is canceled due to the withdrawal of the protest by the ANC. See Board Order Number Two Thousand Twenty dash one six zero. The next case in our, our calendar is case number twenty P R O zero 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 three. Mirror Lounge License Number One 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 Nine Five Zero. And Ms. Andrews, can you please elevate the, the rights of the protestant? Has all the rights been elevated for everyone who is a part of this case?
One second, Mr. Chair, I'm almost done.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
Alright, thank you. Um, good afternoon, everyone. I would like to, um, I would like each party to introduce themselves for the record. I would, when you introduce yourself for the record, I will also ask that you spell your name and please identify your affiliation. So we will start with the licensee.
Sidon Johannes, on behalf of the licensee, and that is S I D O N Y O H A N N E S.
Good afternoon, Ms. Johannes. Is the licensee on also?
No, they're not on.
Alright, let's start with the, with the group of eleven. I'll start with the representatives. Please, um, identify yourselves and spell your name for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman Evan Shlom, uh, member of and representative of the group of eleven. First name is Evan, E V as in Victor, A N as in Nancy. Last name is S as in Sam, C as in Charlie, H L O M as in Mary.
Good afternoon, Mr. Shlom. Who else, if, introduce themselves.
Hi, this is Dan Orlasky. Uh, I am a signatory to the, uh, group of eleven, and I'm the ANC Commissioner for One B O Two. Uh, my name is spelled D A N I E L O R L A S K E Y.
Uh, who else do we have?
Brad Godzina. First name Brad, B R A D, last name Godzinas, G U D Z I N A S.
Thank you. Who else do we have? I can't hear you, sir. Speak up.
Can you hear me now?
So, up some more, turn the volume up somewhere, sir.
Can you hear me well now?
We can hardly hear you, sir. Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay. Uh, first name Luis, L U I S, last name Espinosa, E S P I N O S A.
Alright, is that everyone?
No, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is Megan Howard. I'm also a member of the group, and the spelling of my name is M E G A N, and the last name is H O W A R D.
Alright, now, who was not at the, um, the status hearing? I'm sorry, at the roll call hearing?
Uh, this is Dan Orlasky. I was not at the roll call hearing.
And who else was not at the roll call hearing?
Megan Howard, I was also not at the roll call hearing.
And Mr. Um, Orlasky, you're not with the ANC, you're with the group? You're representing, you're a part of the group, you're in ANC?
I'm not representing the ANC, I'm just part of the group of eleven. There is no ANC for this, it's just the group of eleven.
Alright, I just want to get some clarification. Ms. Johannes, the representation by Mr. Orlasky? I'm sorry, guess, Mr. Shlom?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Godzinas was also not at the roll call hearing. I'm not sure if he might be muted for some reason. So we had three of the people on today were not at the roll call hearing.
Thank, thank you for pointing. I wasn't sure if I was or not. I could, can remember when these things started. Thank you.
Alright.
Uh, excuse me, I think we have a couple of more protesters that are, I think they, they are telling me that they are on mute. Maybe they have not been authorized to enter the meeting?
Can, can they, can, can, can they put their names in the chat? And Ms. Andrews will elevate their rights?
I'll type in their, their names.
Or they can raise their hands. I believe they can raise their hands in the chat, and Ms. Andrews will, will elevate their rights.
Mr. Luis, please make sure you're messaging me, uh, Abra Webex, instead of, uh, one person. I, I can't see your chat. Is Mr. Nick Sin, Sinta? Nick Sinta, is that he a part of you guys?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll, he's the only person left.
And is Jensen solving?
They're not on the line.
Okay, okay.
Uh, Mr. Sinta, can, if you have a camera, please open your camera and please open your microphone, and can you please spell, identify yourself on the, on the, for, for the record, please, and please spell your name.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Nick Shinta. Uh, that's spelled N I C K S C I N T A.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. It's, it was my understanding that, um, at the status hearing, they were missing two members. Um, more than two members, two additional, more than two additional members are present here today at the status hearing. So with that said, and without objection, because I have not heard any objection from Ms. Johannes, um, I then make a motion that the ABC board grant, um, standing to the group. Is there a second?
Mr. Shawna, second.
Mr. Shawna, second. The motion will now have a roll call vote in the motion that has been properly seconded by Mr. Short. Mr. Short?
Mr. Shawna, I agree.
Mr. Grandis?
Mr. Grandis, I agree.
Ms. Hanson?
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Ms. Crockett?
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
And Mr. Anderson, I agree. The matter passes five zero zero, so full standing is, is granted to the protestant. Alright, thank you. Are there any preliminary, are there any preliminary matters by, um, by either side that needs to be addressed?
Not by the licensee.
And none, and none from the group of eleven, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you very much. Um, normally at this time, the, the board would issue, um, some dates for the protest hearing status, but we have to get back to you, and we will provide some dates for the protest hearing status. I would advise both parties, if they are so inclined that they can meet, and if they're, if they decide that they want to sign a settlement agreement, they can do that. They're always open to, to sign settlement agreement and, and bring it to the attention of the board for approval. If they do not, if they want the board to make a decision, the board will be open to make a decision if that's so. Alright. So now that we've scheduled this matter for protest hearings, there are a few things that I would like to instruct you about so that the protest hearing is focused and addresses only those issues that are being protested. You either have already received or will soon be receiving an email from Imani Morland that contains a copy of a protest information form PIP and a copy of an exhibit form. Both parties are required to complete and submit the protest information form and the exhibit form at least seven days before the date of the hearing. If we do not receive a copy of your forms seven days before the hearing, your application or your protest may be subject to dismissal. These documents not only need to be submitted to ABRA, but to the opposing party as well. Please know that these documents greatly assist the board in narrowing the protest issues, facilitating the process, and keeping the parties on point during the hearing. Each side will have ninety minutes to present their case. This includes all direct and cross-examination of witnesses. The board does not intend to hear testimony on matters that are not relevant to these issues that have been protested, nor will the board tolerate repetitive testimony. Are there any questions by anyone?
No questions.
Hearing no questions. We thank you greatly for your cooperation. If I, if, if you have any questions at any time leading up to the hearing, please do not hesitate to contact Assistant General Counsel April Randall at two oh two four four two four three five three. And once again, um, if, if the parties want to meet and discuss settlement, um, the board supports that. I'm not saying this is what you need to do, but the board supports that. If, um, um, as I've always said to all cases, if I don't see you in the new year, I will not take it personally. What that means is that the, the parties have worked this matter out. If not, we will see you in the new year when this matter is scheduled for hearing. Thank you all for your participation today, and have a great, have a great day. This matter is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, you're welcome. Thank you. Alright, we have now come to the end of our calendar for the day, and unless there, uh, unless there are any other issues, I'm going to close the record. I am going to close, uh, I'm going to close, close the record. Alright. As Chairperson of the Alcohol Beverage Control Board for the District of Columbia, in accordance with D C Official Code Section two five seven four B of the Open Meeting Act, I move that the ABC board hold a closed meeting on November eighteenth, two thousand twenty for the purpose of seeking legal advice from our council on the matters identified on the board's legal, license, and investigative agenda for November eighteen, two thousand twenty, as will be published on the, in the D C Register on November sixth, two thousand twenty. Is there a second?
Mr. Shawna, second.
Mr. Shawna, second. The motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion that was now that it's been properly seconded by Mr. Short. Ms. Hanson?
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mr. Grandis?
Mr. Grandis, I.
Mr. Short?
Mr. Shawna, I agree.
Mr. Croc, Ms. Crockett?
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Mr. Anderson, I agree. As it appears that the motion has passed, I hereby give notice that the ABC board will hold this closed meeting pursuant to the, the Open Meetings Act. Notice will also be posted on the ABC Board hearing room bulletin board, placed on electronic calendar on ABRA's website, and published in the D C Register in as timely a manner as practical. We are adjourned for the day, and I just want to advise the board members that we are, we are not returning to an executive, to the executive, we are not returning to an executive meeting, so we are adjourned for the day. Have a great day, and I will see you on the eighteenth for our next meeting. Have a great day. Thank you. Alright. Bye-bye.
Have a good one, everyone.
Good meeting. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Bye-bye.